You are on.
Right.
You are.
I found it and I got it.
We'll call our November meeting for the new R two school board this quarter. Begin with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Let the allegiance be the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, last one forgot to say. Say it right. Uh, we'll have warped you for life. We do have a forum where our Miss Anderson's wells receive a dollar. Prove the agenda, your motion to approve agenda is written.
Motion.
Mr. Brooks on second, Mr. Shear, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. There's no public comment, we'll go to the consent agenda, which we have minutes of the October meeting and the financial statement.
I'll make a motion to approve when everyone's ready.
That I. Motion by Mr. Berthong second, Mr. Thompson. Any further discussion? All those in play favorite, please raise your hand. Motion carries five, one abstain, all was in here. Bills? Repayment? Questions on bills?
Ms. Kingsley. Play me who Jill Brown is.
He's um.
What we do with that.
A reading specialist who is working with the elementary just about maybe three or four times this year, thr- yeah, three or four this year, and it's working on Title One, data collections, small groups, analyzing data, just setting up that multi-tiered system and just all of that, that comes in.
Sorry, I wasn't much time.
All day.
All day and she's dynamic, I've used her in three school districts.
Yep.
She's absolutely dynamic.
She owns her own schools, written many books.
Doctor, yeah, she's a real thing.
Very knowledgeable and reading. Well, Angela and I spent a whole day with her. We learned a lot.
You're learning, there's still hope.
I don't.
Well, it's been nice knowing you, Tony.
That was the only question I even had.
Did you see the additional page that April just put in?
There was one addition.
I wanted to make sure you all saw it, she just dropped it in, I'm sorry.
Anything out of the ordinary there? Probably, that's probably the whole out.
There is a bond, the U M B bank agency has to do with our bond.
Yeah.
It's once a year.
Yeah.
Otherwise, everything's just. The things you've already seen, I would say, over the years, you know. Light back choking device, we do have some cabinets and devices that are now in the building, so that cabinet's on here.
I'll make a motion to approve bills.
Motion by Mr. Berthong second, thank you, Mr. Brookshire. Any further discussion? And I'm gonna proceed to vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. Okay, we get into reports. Do you specialize first?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, you get to go first, man.
You get to meet Mr. York.
Here my, here my, see my reporter, I need to make some copies.
Now we have it.
We need you to go make six, no.
Six copies.
No, I just, I wanted to start by thanking you guys for the opportunity and then thanking Ms. Kingsley and the admin team for all the support that I've gotten so far, but it's been a whirlwind, been busy, but I'm enjoying every minute of it, so, thank you guys. So if you look up there, it's just kind of our special ed stats that I've ran, just kind of where we're at. Little bit different from last year, I think our numbers are keep continuing to fall, I know that was an issue a few years ago and you guys had the onsite, I think, you know, being at that forty, you look down there, we don't have the December one count done last year during January, the December one count was done, so the numbers I have are the numbers that I counted, and we're at about, we're at forty students right now with I P, so that's actually a really good number for our district size, like to see it just a little bit lower, so we're gonna continue the evaluation process, getting some of our students evaluated, making sure that they're continuing their eligibility and, you know, keep getting that number where it needs to be, but I think forty's definitely going in the right direction compared to if you look back at twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we were at ninety, that's when that onsite was initiated by DESI, and so, so credit to the past directors that have got to the work to get that number down, and we're gonna continue that work as well, so that's just kind of where we're at as far as disability count, you know, I just kind of broke down where we're at in terms of all the ways we qualify for special education and how many students are in those eligibility categories. The second place is just our placement counts, how many students that we have in each placement area, eighty percent's generally where we want our students, so we continue to have the majority of our students in that eighty percent range, that's actually, that's a really good, really good indicator that we're doing things the right way, I would like to see that eleven number kind of get some of those kids pushed in from that forty to seventy-nine back up to eighty percent, so again, those are just goals and things that we need to continue to work on. We do still have, you know, students in the, in private days facilities, but heading those meetings, I'm, you know, a part of that, a part of that team, you know, so I'm a little aware of how, of where they're going and how they're progressing, and it sounds like they're making good progress. So again, we're at the forty, we're currently at forty, previous year forty-seven, but again, much better than ninety from the twenty-one, twenty-two school years. Going on down, we have our staff, so we have myself, I'm the special education director first year, Ms. Hans is back, she's doing our high, junior high, high school, we have Mr. Robinson, he's a new hire, doing kindergarten through six, Ms. Mathis is still in ECSE, then we have Ms. Guffey, she's our S L P, and then we don't currently have anybody that's not appropriately staffed, so all of our, all of our teachers are, have the certification that they need. Support staff wise, we have Ms. Hudson, she's our K six para, Ms. Miller's our K, our seven twelve para, and then we have Ms. Simon, she's our, our ECSE para, and then Ms. Campbell, Ms. Long and Ms. Parker each work one-on-one with some students, so, and then going ahead, we have strengths, so again, I just kind of looked at what, what Ms. Bush reported last year to you guys and just kind of piggybacked off of that, last year that sensory room was, was considered a strength, we still use it, Ms. Wright and I, it's kind of on her end of the building, we, it's available for, for everybody district wide, but we mostly use it in the elementary, but it's been a strength for us as a way to get these kids some time to get them sensory breaks, get them self-regulated, back on track for classes, we help, we think that helps manage behaviors and support our teachers when, when they do have some trouble with, trouble with behaviors. Our certified staff actually took, was trained in October, or September, October from our R P D C compliance coordinator, Lisa Day, she came in and covered SMART goals and reviewed existing data with our staff, and so we felt like we got some really good P D from her, she was, she's obviously very, very knowledgeable about spec compliance, and I use her a lot, and, and so we appreciate her coming in and doing that P D with us. So we've continued our work with the SAT team, I think that's continuing to, to emerge as a strength, both I attend staff meetings with Ms. Wright and, and, you know, our grade level teachers, and, and we collaborate, we go over data, we look at what, that's a very important piece, keeping that number at forty versus ninety, having that data team in place where we can discuss, make decisions based on, you know, needs and talk about strengths and weaknesses and look at the progress kids are making and when to, and then knowing when to initiate that special ed referral. So having that data team in place, I was very pleased when I learned that that was in place when I got here, that was something that I've had to work on in the past getting started, so knowing that it was in place was definitely welcome for me. And then we got our DESI tiered monitoring cohort results, we had four, four ICAPS, which, so in items that needed attention, four was a really good number, for, I was, I was really pleased with that number, I felt like, you know, knowing the past and where it was at, I was expecting a lot more, so just four areas where we were considered out of compliance, but we've initiated the steps of cleaning that up, and, and so, four's a, sounds like, you know, we had four items out of compliance, but I was expecting a lot more, so I think that, that's definitely something to brag about and commend our staff from last year on making sure everything was, was pretty much in order, so, again, the areas that we were founded to need some attention were reds and goals, hence why we brought Ms., what, do you have?
What'd you say, Liz?
Hit our reviews of existing data, so we needed some attention to that, and then our goals, so that.
Goals are always.
Absolutely, SMART goals are, and they're, and that, and those are a challenge typically because we, you know, they're, they can be kind of either too specific, not specific enough, you know, and so it's finding that balance, I know every school struggles with that, so, but those are the two areas that needed, needed some attention, which is why we, we initiated the, the training with Ms., with Ms. Day, she came in and talked about those two items, so. And again, our, our special ed case managers are closely monitoring student progress, they're collecting data, they've started using data binders, putting those in for the parents, they can talk to them quarterly, I think they took some of them to parent teacher conferences as they were getting going with them, so as we go into I P meetings, they'll have those data binders and they can see our, how their children are making progress with their I P goals using those, so, so those are our strengths, weaknesses, and things I'd like to continue to work on, just continuing to adapt to the continuous changes in special education, I mean, it changes all the time, it's evolving, everything's always changing, and, so we just always got to make sure we're staying on top of all the changes, and then our filing and organization files, that's something that I'm trying to tackle, I wanted to make sure that when I got here, I kind of, I don't know, I just wanted my own system and making sure that we had something that was, was organized and everything, and we knew where we were at, so that's something that I've kind of, I've taken on, tasked some of our case managers with help with that, but just getting more organized with our, with our files, because those are important, especially the paper files, so, and then just continuing that collaboration between gen ed and special ed, that's so important for me, I would like to, you know, especially when it comes to implementing I P goals and accommodations, just our teachers collaborating, working together, so that's something I would continue, I'd like to continue to see happening, and then just training, training our general ed teachers and on implementing universal accommodations, just knowing that, you know, some of these accommodations they get in their I P can be, you know, utilized in the classroom without, so just being, making them aware of that, so anticipated actions, you know, I want to continue to schedule some P D opportunities for our, our sped teachers to be trained and pushing into general ed classrooms to provide special education services, that's something that's a little different, something I'm used to, where we take our sped teachers and, and push them into the general ed classes, so we're not removing our students from the tier one instruction, instead, they're gonna, they would stay in there, our teachers would come to them, we're not quite there yet, I don't want to turn our teachers, our sped teachers, I want to get them some training and see what, see how we can, we can go about that, but ultimately, I'd like to see, you know, going into next year, our teachers pushed into some general ed classes a little bit and how that would look, it's called co-teaching, and, and it's a really good model, if it works right, if it doesn't work right, you know, it can be a disaster too, so we, we want to make sure we get our teachers the training that they need in order to be, to be proficient at that. And again, I just put in there that we're gonna continue to work on our filing system, getting it more organized, working with our building administrator, administrators to purchase academic resources that our sped teachers need, and I know we're doing, we're working on that, and then getting them to training in U Fly and Wander Series, especially our elementary level, we want them trained in the same curriculum that our, that our gen ed staff's using, so, that's pretty much all I have for you guys, you guys have any questions? Well, I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You still have two kids going to Discovery?
We do, yeah, when I said the private.
Two students?
Maybe two is last year.
That's what I thought you.
Yeah, yeah, the private day facility, that's what that means, so, yeah.
Any questions, Mr. York?
Very good presentation, thank you.
First year going okay, you think?
That's what I said, I think it's been a whirlwind, but it's been.
You're smiling too much, it must not be hard. If you're smiling too much, it must not be hard.
That's a good sign.
Appreciate the work you're doing.
Appreciate you.
I understand, you know, the work that it takes, wording is everything.
Absolutely.
It's too bad that the wording sometimes gets you in a write-up, but it does, the wording is important, those roles were hard to write sometimes, those guys catch you on that, and they give you a thing to work on, and you're thinking, oh my goodness, man.
Yeah, no, I was very pleased with the way our tiered order came out, that was.
Only four things.
Yeah, that's really good.
Pretty good.
It really, you know, and it's just picking things, you know, and I mean, it's just things they just go through with a five, two, home.
It's nitpick, but it's, they have to find something.
They, they do, that's their job.
You know that, all right, thank you. Ms. Mercer, you want to do a P A T update?
Yes, I just want to give you a real quick update on our P A T program, we currently have a three-member team, I'm acting as the P A T supervisor, and so I make sure that we're in compliance, I also help them with all the invoicing, I make sure we get the correct payment. Emily Mathis, our preschool teacher, has taken over this year as the A three to kindergarten entry parent educator, and so she currently has six families in the preschool that she meets with monthly for parent education, she's also organizing a monthly group connection to get families together to collaborate, and she will be organizing our math screening event that we'll have this spring, and then Pam Gacki is continuing as our birth to three parent educator, she currently has two families, and is also providing all the screenings for infants in the home. We had our first advisory meeting earlier this afternoon, and we wanted to invite you, if you're interested in being part of our advisory committee, we meet twice a year, we'd love to have your input and to update you on our program, so just hit me an email if you would be willing to give us a little bit of time, we'll be meeting again in March.
Awesome, thank you.
We find lots of kids to sign up for.
It gets tougher and tougher.
It's tough, isn't it?
But we do, our goal was eight families for this year and for parent education, and we have met that, that goal, for screening, our goal is fifty, that will be a little bit harder, last year, we were really hit hard, we were only able to get about twenty people to participate in screening, and so we're gonna start a campaign after January and really try to push and get as many kids screened so we don't know who's out there, and we can hopefully get them participating more.
It's a good program, it's just, it's sad that not more people know about it, even though they do know about it, they just don't understand what good it can do for.
Absolutely.
Anyway, enough of that, thank you for that, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Mercer? Okay. All right, so is it rooted or Root Ed?
Root Ed.
Root Ed?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Dunn has told us wrong, the whole.
When I went to my state training in August, everybody said it's Root Ed, and then the founder got up and talked and called it Rooted, so it kind of depends who you.
Who you talking to, that's what Mr. Dunn said.
So I, I pulled. He's not wrong, but the state people say Root Ed, the founder says Rooted, so we probably should, since he founded it, but it's money, money, probably should call it Rooted. So, first, I'd like to introduce myself, my name's Eric Moyers, I spent thirty-five years in public education, all working at the West County School District, seven years as teacher, seven years as high school counselor, and twenty-one as a high school principal, well, two years as a middle school principal and the rest as a high school principal. So it's been a pleasure, I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity, I've been sitting around in retirement for a few years, getting a little bored, and this has kind of given me an opportunity to get something back.
You're not doing it right. You're bored, you're not doing.
I got tired of all the honeydews. I'm off tomorrow, and she's told me already, we're putting up Christmas decorations outside, so, thought about coming into work.
Oh my goodness.
But it's been a pleasure getting to know the kids, I'm enjoying myself, I'm hopefully we're making a difference, first, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Root Ed program, it was founded originally in two thousand eighteen by a man by the name of Byron Trot, who grew up in Union, Missouri, of all places, ended up going to college at University of Chicago, got involved in investment banking, and he was the vice chairman for Goldman Sachs for many, many years, and then he founded his own company called B D T Investments, he lives in Chicago, but through his experiences growing up in Union, he realized and saw that there was a need for more assistance for kids in rural areas, and him and his wife decided to found the Root Ed program, which is designed to put a college career advisor in rural schools, currently in Missouri, there's a hundred and forty-eight, I believe it is, schools now that have this program, you know, some of them are full-time, some of them are part-time, so that's how, kind of the background of the program, hopefully we can make a difference here, and I think we are, I think Mr. Dunn said you had one kid go to college last year?
One kid gets scholarship last year. I don't have a number on the college.
Okay, but, that's right at the one, but right now, as of today, we've got ten kids with applications into colleges, ten that have completed their tests, you know, some of them have already got acceptance letters back, some of them were still waiting.
That's great.
Okay, so, so we're, we're, you know, we've seen some improvements, some of the things we've done, I, we've taken them to the Rolla College Fair, I think we had like twenty kids go that day, and then yesterday, we took them on a tour of state tech, I had twenty-four juniors and seniors go to that, so, kids seem to enjoy it, so, you know, we're making the difference, next semester, the target is gonna be more on career activities as well, I focus trying to get the college kids involved first because it's, it's more active then, the career kids, they're going straight to the workforce, you know, the application process gets started a little later. So the other thing I've been working on is A plus, right now, we've got two kids that have all the requirements, unless they bomb their attendance, which I don't think's gonna happen, but, but, you know, I can't say they're gonna get it.
Still ninety-five percent.
Yes. We have twelve seniors who could get it if they get test score, they're lacking, you know, you have to have proficient on the E O C math, or E O C math test, I don't know why I'm getting nervous.
I was.
Like seven of them are off there.
You said you weren't gonna have to do this again.
Your pace.
You wanna, I know why you're nervous, because you talked about the honeydew list, and it's on live, live stream right now, your wife heard.
Good thing you didn't say anything bad about it.
He said he was gonna be happy to do that tomorrow.
E O C math test, they have to be proficient, there's twelve kids that have everything else but the test score, if we can find a way to get them that test score, there's some that will get quality.
Yeah, which is awesome, because A plus is a professional.
Yeah. It's gonna be, it's like thirty-seven hundred dollars for each kid to go to college.
That's fantastic.
Well, I just think, you know, I appreciate this program more than anything, whether our kids take advantage of some of the stuff, we're exposing them to stuff that they haven't seen.
Well, that's the name of the game.
Being exposed to things outside, hey, this is a possibility, I just, from your trip yesterday, I've already talked to a couple of them that they were just dumbfounded by, they didn't know all that was, you know, available.
And it's just right up the road.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, less than hour from home, so, just, just being able to get them out and let them see, there's, there'll be some light bulbs turned on, there'll be some switches come on for some of these kids, so, and that, that's all we can, that's the greatest thing we can do is just show them there is opportunity, continue what you're doing.
Just want to mention, I, I know there's a proposal later on on the agenda about pre-ACT and A C T testing, you know, I think it'd be a way for us as a school district to invest in the kids' future.
Yeah, and it's very minimal experience.
Yeah, it is.
We've heard good things about.
Yes.
What the program's doing, the only one reason that you hear good things is the person that's working it, so we appreciate the work that you've done.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure getting to know kids.
It's being set out there, so people are talking, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
They even saying good things, so, there you go.
That was.
I can make up my own.
Thank you, Mr. Moyers.
On yourself.
No one else does, I've done it yet.
Thank you. I hear tremendous stuff.
Thank you, appreciate it.
If not, we'll move on to our principals report, Ms. Wright? You're gonna go first this time?
Mr. Dunn will. Mr. Dunn will never go first.
I don't know, Mr. Dunn, you ought to go.
He went first last time.
Did he go first last time? I can't remember now.
He did.
Okay, I wasn't here.
Okay.
That's why I can't remember.
Elementary building.
Get off track and it's going to turn dumb.
Halloween parties were great. We had a lot of parents here at our little parade. It's always fun to get to see all the kids dressed up. The classrooms were amazing. I mean, I walked in, I made it in every single classroom, took photos of every single classroom. And I think we posted everything classroom so people could see that. It was, it was amazing, beautiful, beautiful classrooms for the party. Red ribbon week went well also. Lots of learning going on there about being drug-free. Ms. McClanahan does a fantastic job of hitting all to be hit on, on red ribbon week time. So I can't say enough about her. She's constantly just everywhere, just going and doing and meeting needs and teaching and in the classrooms and she's great. Parent teacher conferences, we had ninety percent of our parents here this year. So I thought that was pretty good.
It's a far cry from where it was a couple of years ago when they didn't feel like parents would show up.
Yeah, that's great.
I didn't even, I missed that, I'm important on.
Yeah. And, you know, that goes to from just, I kind of created a way to make sure we reach out and communicate to each parent. We have a universal forum that we all use and so credit goes to the teachers too for making sure they're reaching out to the parents and getting them in here, so. So I thought that was great. K-three concert, Christmas concert is going to be December fourth. That's going to start at six P.M. So Dootie's in charge of that. She's great, it's going to be great. So the teachers will be, K-three teachers will be here for that to help out as well. So she's all nervous about that.
She's doing an amazing job.
But I think it's going to be fantastic. She's just funny when you talk to her about it, but she's going to do fine.
I'm going to call her. I think I get an update on it. I'm just sitting home, you know, just, it's on her mind all the time.
And then we are looking forward to our twelve days of Christmas. So that's going to hit as soon as we come back from Thanksgiving break, right off the bat on December second. We've got a lot of stuff planned for that, staff and our students, so. Professional development part, PD day on November third, we did some more wonders training. And we analyzed map data. Tracy did help out with that. She kind of came in, guns a blade in there. I was a little bit, whoa, this is not going to, but it went well. I'm glad she did that. I didn't, I honestly did not think that the teachers were going to be able to accomplish as much as, and they did. But they did. So it was great. A lot of, wow, I didn't know that, and a lot of eye-opening conversations and looking at that data. And I really broke it down too. Like I, I went to like little bitty, everything, printed everything out at every grade level. It was good, good stuff. December eighth, PD, we are going to do a digital deep dive into the wonders. Some teachers have been asking about that. So we're going to get that, get that piece going so they can get in there and get their kids on there. And there's going to be some more data that they can gather from, from doing that as well. K-one teachers continuing to work with TNTP. I don't know if you guys saw that. I think you did share that in the board packet, but wow, what a huge increase in just our foundational skills that were missing and that are now there. And a teacher actually say to me that this is the first year that every single one of her kids are reading, so. First grade, yeah, every single one of them reading. She's just very excited about that. We got a lot of good stuff going on academically. B-tap two continues, we do have a couple of second-year teachers in that. We do not have any first-year teachers this year, so. Letters training, got a couple of teachers in that as well, so that continues to go. Student enrollment there, our total one forty-two at the moment. It does fluctuate a little bit here and there, but right now we have one forty-two and I kind of listed there. Mrs. Kingsley wanted us to start kind of doing that per grade level every month. So I'll have that there where you can kind of see what our numbers are per grade level. Student attendance, still pretty good. And I just added that parent teacher conference again, I don't know why I did that down there, but.
Because it was something that was important to you, that's why you did it.
Yeah, that's probably why I did it, wanted to make sure it was there. I mean, that, that is great, ninety percent.
Well, it'd be, you know, you get the parents involved.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good start, good foundation.
Yeah.
Especially at elementary level.
Yes.
Any questions, Ms. Wright? No? Done?
She probably just tells me we're wrong.
In your bag, I'll, you know, a couple of Rooted Ed things real quick. But in your packet, you have the monthly Rooted Ed newsletter. Well, I called it Rooted Ed. We all know what we're talking about. But some things are just in this newsletter. I think we'll probably try to attach this every month when we get to keep up with what's going on. Some things that stand out to me are when you read the, in the paragraph part where it talks about Mr. Moyers has touched base with every parent in the garden. I think that's, that's phenomenal. And then when you read the data on the right side, he's met with every single senior one-on-one. And a hundred percent of the seniors already have a post-high school plan. Because the financial stuff and the applications, that's still ongoing, but that's, that's just tremendous progress.
Yeah, because we're in, we're in November.
They have a plan.
I mean, that's fantastic.
The kids that were leaving didn't, weren't exposed to having what they've been exposed to.
Well, they weren't even thinking about a plan.
No, I know.
Absolutely. So I just, those are important things that really stood out to me as I was reading through that. Couple of things are in the newsletter I want to hit real quick because I could forget it when I'm closing out. One, I just really appreciate the Masonic Lodge in Raleigh for what they did last Saturday at the pancake breakfast. I was able to go to, it was a wonderful, you know, event. But I haven't heard it totally yet, how much we raised. But I think it's just phenomenal, we do ask some needs in the nursing department and just updating some things, you know, around campus. So I just think that's phenomenal, they selected us as the recipient of those, you know, that event, so. Pretty cool. Also, the gym mats came in. And so I know there's some question about, you know, some colors, measurements and that sort of thing. And so we're working on trying to, you know, how we're going to new boards.
How to work with that? Did I share with you all, I don't think I did, because it was all Monday.
Yeah.
When they went, when BSN was here to hang them and they actually put them up. So that's when they unwrapped them, when they did, even though we ordered for a screen, it didn't really go with our gym. And I kind of, I'd say a blue wish tint would be a way to say it, I don't know.
It was an off-color.
Very disappointing, obviously. And so, you know, John was here and didn't really want to hang them in there because it just wasn't going to look good at all. So, so the big mat at the end, instead of putting it in there, we've taken it down to the little gym, which really we needed a mat in there anyway. John and I really thought we were getting a mat in there, so we were thinking, okay, that works out. There's not a lot of green in there, so it didn't. And then on the other end where the mats go against, and what happened was they measured too long. We, they had the right measures, but they built them too long. So they didn't fit, so they'll replace those at their cost. But what we'll have to do is get a new mat for the end of the gym. And so that presents new conversation about what to get. Do you, do we shop around and see if another company has a green that matches us better? Or do we go with a different color? And so Mr. Simley's been, I think, exploring that a little bit on.
Well, here's our options. Like I said, this was very disappointing. I was very excited. They look great, the mats look great. The just, greens are hard. And in our high school gym, the walls are green, the bleachers are green, the chairs are green, the mats are green. They none match. The mats down there now do not match. I mean, I don't know if anybody's noticed. So when I called.
Did you tell her today then?
I did not. So I told, I just, they called me and I came straight over, looked. They looked okay, but I'm not happy with okay. I want to look great. We're going to be here for thirty years probably, so we want to look great. The green is, it's got a little, it is, it is the correct green. It is a forest green, but it's not forest.
Iberia green.
Kelly green is what it is.
Yeah.
But this is their darkest green, forest green. Now, they do have, BSN uses companies, they've got probably twenty companies where they do mats. But this is their favorite company with their favorite mat. So that's why they use this. And we thought it was forest green and so did BSN. But when they got here, they're not forest green. You'll see them down in the old gym, they look great in there, but nothing down there is green. Bleachers aren't green, the floor is not green, the walls aren't green. So to me, there's, there's a couple of different options. First option is paint the walls. You can't put green mats on a green wall. So I looked at a thousand gyms today that used the color green. No walls were green. So that makes it easier to, you know, if the wall's not green, the mat, you're not going to notice. But our chairs are green and our bleachers are green, so it needs to be the same. But even like Greg told me at BSN, every company's forest green is a different forest green. It's a different color. So there's no way to for sure match.
They can't send us a sample?
They can send samples, but we've already waited three months. Do we want them for next year or do we want to try to get them by Christmas? So to me, the simplest solution is painting the wall, which, that's up to you guys. Now, I've looked at, like I said, a bunch of stuff. We can have black mats with green in them different places. They're, they're making me some, they're making me a nice, hoping I had it tonight to show you guys. A black one and a gray one. We have black and gray both in the gym. My opinion is I prefer black mats. That's not everybody's opinion. But I've seen a bunch of black mats, I mean, I've got pictures of black. Which, you know, you can see on here, half the mats got letters. You know, it says Newburg Wolves with the wolf on it. The difference where it says Newburg Wolves, that's paint. That's painted on there, so they can match it for sure. The mats, they cannot, because the mats is not paint. It's the whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so whatever, whatever that company's green is, that's the color, there's no change. So what they paint on there, they can match with our bleachers and floor, wall. Still, I don't think it's a great idea to have a green wall, unless we're going to have black or gray mats. A lot of schools have black and gray mats. I looked at a bunch of colleges and colleges are hard because they don't have walls. They got bleachers, seats all around, so there's not walls at each end. High schools usually do. Every green high school that I looked in Missouri, the wall was not green. If the wall was green, the mats were black or gray. So that's our two easiest solutions. And he told me, he almost guaranteed me we'd have them by Christmas if I just tell him what we want.
So the one that's on the, the stage side, they're going to redo that one? And the color that you tell them to?
Yes, that worked out fine, really, we were better off. Because that kind of gave us an excuse to say, hey, we want new ones. Because it did, and also it, I don't know if you notice over the, over the stage, there's a lip. That the lip was probably eight inches instead of four. And it would have worked, but it hit our, it hit the curtain. But then we could have made it work.
Yeah.
But once again, I didn't want them just to be okay, I want it to be great.
You bet.
So they'll fix that lip on the new one. We just got to tell them the color scheme. And this color scheme, when you go to the old gym, I think you'll see it looks great. I mean.
Is it like that green right there?
It kind of is, not, not exactly.
It's more Iberia green.
That green is all, that green's around the school, there's five greens.
Yeah, I was coming.
I went around and looked, there's five greens.
Does it like your cover on your thing?
It's got a more blue tint, it's Kelly, it's Kelly green. It's more like Iberia.
Yeah, which we don't want.
Not sure.
And I'll be honest, when they brought them in, the girls were having practice. And the girls were like, those don't match.
Or it's them.
The girls basketball. Myself, I brought my wife with me, because she's, she's a woman. And her eyes are different to mine. It looked okay, it really did. It looked, and I sent pictures to Doug and Tracy and they're like, it looks okay. Okay's not good enough. But I, I don't know, I thought you guys should be involved. I mean, and I wish I had pictures where you could see with the green and see with the gray and see with the black.
No, because I, I know the gray, we have gray on our seats that the players did.
Gray is on the seats, gray is on the bleachers.
It would be easy to implement that as well.
Correct match.
How soon do you have to set up your scheme?
Well, he's supposed to get me the, he was supposed to get them to me today and I guess whoever does them for him didn't touch through.
Can you send that out to us?
Yep.
And then we can kind of go from there? Should we have that, that, an idea back to you from, and again, I don't want to make that decision, but to give you an opinion.
Yeah, we, we definitely, that's what I want.
Okay.
I want.
If I give you an opinion, don't want to be the one deciding.
Right.
I'd be doing it.
Well.
Clothes for you to wear.
We all disagree.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure these guys have to have their clothes, I don't know if I want them deciding on designs. Color schemes.
Well, I think it's like, it looked the best, but purple's the same way. Back home, purple, it's impossible. Purples are just like greens, there's so many.
There's so many variants.
So we use black.
Black orange.
Black, and they looked awesome. And everybody's like, well, black's going to show everything. Well, the school back home is twenty, twenty-something, and we've never replaced them and they look perfect still. We was just there this week.
Well, if you can get us some, if we can see some, some workups of it.
So we can see it.
Right.
Now, it's going to be hard because you don't get to really see it.
Well, you can't see it on the green wall, that was the problem. You can't see on a green.
Well, get some construction.
But when I ask people, they're like, the gym wall's not green. Yeah, it is, you know, people don't even notice that. And the mat that's on the wall now does not match, no.
Yeah.
The mat that's on there.
Yeah, the mats were there forever and then I think.
These mats probably ain't just as good as those. But they're new and the design's a lot needed. So that's probably why they look as good as what's on there now.
Shoot us an idea, we can give an opinion. It may make you more confused, I don't know.
I think, I think black or gray, whichever one kind of, I think we'll be fine with that. There's enough green in there already.
And the only thing I would say on the gray, because that's what our chairs are.
Yeah, that's kind of why I was asking as well.
It's kind, it would kind of blend in. Complement, the players' chairs are gray with the wolf logo, we would have a. Listen to me.
We deal with you. I don't care, I don't want to say it, do the West County.
Your floor is tinted black, the whole basketball floor is black.
It is.
Yeah, but our, our floor is that gray, three-point.
Yes.
So that might blend in as well, I don't know.
And there's black in there too. Let's, let's look at it, we'll give you an opinion.
I'm going to have to go.
We'll give our opinion and he's going to pick black.
I'm telling you, whatever, whatever the majority is, that's what I'm picking.
He's going, I lost the numbers, we better go black.
I already know what I'm putting. It looks bad, it's on you. It's on Tony.
Mr. Simley, Mr. Simley made the decision.
Please go look at the old one. Please go look in the old gym, that's really good.
Hey, and technically, every employee that explains for something, what do they, they blame their boss. You are technically my boss here.
That's funny, I love working.
You all heard that, right?
Wait till the next game, I told you.
Take it out of your TA announcing page.
Yeah, how can you take zero out of zero?
Oh, yeah.
See our attendance there, we had two or three move out. Our attendance percentage ADA so far for the year, that's cumulative for the year, it's just under ninety-four percent. And as I fill that out every month, it's been a slow climb getting up there. So like, our attendance is staying pretty steady, but just slightly getting better every month so far. I know we've really, haven't really hit any sick bugs too bad yet, but doing pretty well there. Our recent PD day, we really dove pretty hard into our testing data that we had so we can, we're able to analyze each question. We don't see the questions, but there's data for each question that we can analyze to help us make curriculum decisions moving forward. We don't see the questions, but there's data for each question that we can analyze to help us make curriculum decisions moving forward, so we can better maximize our time in the classroom. You know, what standards did we, uh, you know, hit well, maybe what did we didn't. What standards did we think we hit well that the kids didn't score in, and looking at those sorts of things, so we can make decisions as we finish out our year. Um, you know, just using that data, you know, wisely there to, uh, just improve instruction, so... Did that, uh, on that P.D. day, I really commend the staff, who just really dug right on in, they worked hard, I mean, the secondary staff we had here, they just dug right on in, they owned that data, and they spent a lot of time looking into it, and, and, uh, it, it was good, it was, it was a good afternoon. FFA, um, we had a great trip in Indianapolis. Uh, you know, they travel with Rala, you know, each year chartering a bus there, and, um, they got to view, you know, see the former graduate, Caitlin, how you were there, get her, uh, American degree. So that was pretty cool too, being able to do that in Indianapolis, being there to support her. And I just, I know we praise our FFA program a lot, but I think it's a credible testament to the kid, and the family's, that's a lot of work, but also just to our program and our advisor. And that we're pumping those, how many is that now, she's had, there's been a few from here accomplish that feat. And, uh, and when we were scheduling this year, I think every single freshman and sophomore taking in our class, you know, it's like, that, I don't have numbers on juniors and seniors, but we just know that's a very large program, and most of our kids are involved, that's a pretty cool thing. And just coincidentally, it's not in the, um, in the packet, the last Monday, Grizzly did, uh, an event here Monday, and some other schools were able to send their advisor, their teachers here to look some of our equipment and that sort of thing too, so... You know, Ms. Strain's heavily connected in a lot of things, and here in a couple weeks, she's going to the farm, she's, she's involved with some state stuff, farm girls, so, just a great asset, and just, it benefits our kids. Ms. Smith took our eighth graders to WCC a few weeks ago. The kids came back just super excited about what they saw at WCC. And they're already talking about the programs they wanna do when they become a junior, I just think that's phenomenal. Juniors, seniors are, you know, doing, but, uh, our kids are able to look to the future, and I think that's phenomenal. Good parent teacher conference, uh, junior high, high school typically don't have the numbers, it's elementary, um, but, our, you know, our teachers have a steady flow, uh, parents coming in, um, so it was a good evening. Had a red ribbon week, I know Ms. Wright talked about that, but appreciate the planning that Ms. McLean and Ms. Smith do organizing that week, and Sarah organizing, um, staff contest for, staff contest for Halloween that week, which was all the same week, so it was a good week. Our Veterans Day assembly, we did stream that, I don't know how many, I know Tony was here, I don't know if anybody was able to watch that online, just a phenomenal, phenomenal event. Incorporating your, our music program, so our elementary kids are there, uh, Dr. Murray's our guest speaker. We get, uh, in here, we, afterwards, we have a reception for our veterans here, we have some co-announcing coffee and stuff that we do, but we also pass around the microphone where every veteran in attendance gets to introduce themselves and talk about, you know, where they served, when they served, what their, you know, deployments and that sort of thing, and it was really cool, we have one parent here who's retired Coast Guard, and coincidentally, we had, uh, a grandparent here that was retired Coast Guard, and the grandparent used to be the commander of the parent, they hadn't seen each other in years, and they reconnected here. So, pretty cool, uh, things that happen here. But, we've had, you know, several, even the veterans and people in attendance saying, this is the best one I've ever seen, best one I've ever been. And, uh, just a lot of work goes involved with, uh, several staff members and clubs coming together to organize different parts of that, just a phenomenal event. Coming down the hall, I saw meet the Wolves.
That was a fun time.
Students have been planning, you know, working hard for a while, and, you know, here we are, tomorrow, you know, is, is the big day. We're probably gonna have to create a plan B for the parade with the weather, so I don't know exactly what that's gonna look like yet, but we're gonna figure it out.
What time is the parade?
We're gonna monitor the weather, it's, it's, uh, around two o'clock, elementary starts lined up. Elementary lines up at around one fifty, so we'll monitor the weather. Yeah, we're gonna monitor the weather.
I'll put the trash bags over.
That's right.
Well, I check the hourly, and so it's kinda, we'll see, hopefully it is by what we go as planned.
He's a true administrator.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
He'll get to the rooted part of the problem.
He will.
Well, yeah, that's important, next time, we already talked about going to State Tech, still went to State Tech, maybe going to State Tech yesterday, that was just a phenomenal opportunity for our kids. I added on there, yesterday we had, uh, a rep, a guy from Kansas City who works with PASS, which is Partner, Partner Alliance for School Safety, PASS K-12. Came and did a professional, uh, school safety site assessment. It's gonna take a few weeks for him to generate his report and get it back to us. This is really gonna funnel into our emergency operations plan that we're going to, uh, be putting together, and I'll probably discuss that a little bit more as we get to an agenda item later on, uh, for, for our program that we're looking to get, but, uh, we've got a lot of things moving with the school safety, a lot of work ahead, um, but he, whether it's the academy, Mr. York is the secondary safety coordinator, he's gonna go through the academy as well, training, but every time you talk to these experts, you gain something that's gonna benefit our school, and yesterday was no different, he was here for about three hours. So, lots of conversation, you know, walking the campus and that sort of thing, so, um, once we get his report, we'll have more to go on, so, and it'll help us generate our planning, you know, moving forward. That's the good stuff, for sure.
Any questions, Mr. Dunn? Ready for Christmas break?
Thanksgiving break and Christmas.
He jumped right to Christmas.
Yeah, well, you know, Thanksgiving, nice people, yes.
Now, these last two full moons seem to just like this, like, run together.
Yeah. I'm standing.
You'll have that on some full moons sometime.
Okay. Any questions? If not, thank you. Do we send a report?
Apologize, I think I got a little long winded on this one. I'm sorry.
Goodness.
I'm gonna try to...
You have to read that.
Well, I'm looking here, going three pages, what have I done? Um... Skin. Um, I kind of alluded to a little bit of the requisition process last month, and so I thought I'd just kinda lay it out there, uh, because that is, it is, it should always be in place, but with us bringing in Web Link, it's really brought that out quite a bit more, and, and it's so important to our stability, that we are not purchasing items before we have appropriate approval, and we know where they're coming from, and all those pieces should be in place, but that was something that was missing. And so I wanted to kinda mention and just lay that out for you, how that works, and then we had that, uh, layer this year, as April and I really went through things, that, that, to ensure that the staff is doing that appropriate order, we want them to print off their invoice, staple it to the P.O., and bring it to the office. And that just helps to say, for them to see the full circle of how that really works. Um, and so I know April still has concerns at times, but we know it takes a little while for people to get used to these things, and for the most part, they do a really good job. Um, just mentioning that the audit review will do that next month, um, Mr. Schultz was still finalizing a couple of things, and, um, pretty close to being ready for that. Um, recruiting, attracting, developing high-quality staff, just wanted to kinda speak to, uh, any process, the, the principals have, and Mr. York have done their training over the summer, and so that is fully in place now, and they've, they should be on about their third observation for each of their staff members at this point, uh, or moving into it by Christmas, sorry, the third one in December. But just kinda what that process is about, giving feedback, um, you know, going in observing, and then getting together to have that feedback conversation, uh, there's scoring involved, there's feedback that the, the teacher gets before they come in, and, and so the whole point of the whole process is really to create a relationship that is a coaching relationship between the principal and the teacher, uh, really, it is a value tip, but really, the goal is to have a partner in that process. So, we have about four different indicators that we're using throughout the district, depending on where you are, I wanted us to do, everybody do seven point four, because monitoring the effective instruction, a whole class and individual learning, and then responding to that is, is a big piece of the learning process. So everybody does that one, and then a couple areas are doing, uh, four point one, and a couple with one point two, and then high school, I know does, still does five point three B, so, you can kinda see those, there's lots of indicators we can pick from, but those are the number one ones that are used in state of Missouri, because those are the, the biggest, mediaest ones that can really move your staff forward. So, uh, just kinda wanted you all to know that that is moving forward and, and going well, um, and again, the relationship piece really, to me, is a huge part of that, so that there's lots of good conversations going on, and that teachers know, know what's going on in their classroom, and can talk about that. You know, they're not disconnected, because that can happen easily, if they're in the classroom and they're having a conversation. Development, enhanced quality, educational instruction, all the programs. This, it, you know, I was a little aggravated with the APR, because we should've been higher, because we lost those eight points, and that really sticks in my craw, and I talked to them about that, and why we missed it, and what that looks like, and we went back, and we've had lots of conversations, and we won't miss those again. But still, that aside, and I kinda laid that out for you, what went on there, but, that aside, we've, we've gone up ten percent since last year, in the last four years since they've collected it, on this set of, of standards, we're at the highest we've ever been, and so, really something to celebrate, that we are moving in the right direction, as being seen all over. Um, but to point out that where we really made our big jump this year was in performance, you know, so that emphasis that's going into standards and materials, and the academic conversations the principals are having with the teachers, and that it's working, it's moving in the right direction, so for us to grow nineteen percent in that area, just worth mentioning, that there's a big success there. You know, we all, I think, feel it in different ways, what we, we feel is going, feel is going well in the district, but then to get that back, and to see that they've laid it out, and really shows the numbers are there too, it's cause for success, or it's, it's cause for celebration here, so, I wanted to lay that out, and I did put, so you could see it a little closer, um, a PDF in the, in the folder for you to look at the APR, so, um, but, you know, let me know if you have questions on that, and, like I said, we've addressed those two areas, we are doing all the KEAs, we are doing all the ICAPS, it just has to be marked in a certain way, and where we thought it was being marked was not where they looked at it from. And so now we know how they're going to see it, and so we know that that's an area that we will not lose in the past, in the, in, in the future, um, and so we have a whole process, so how we're gonna do that, who's doing it, accountability, and we won't lose those points next year, but, and not lose, but we just didn't get them. Facilities, grounds, buses, and so forth, safety for, um, faculty, staff, students, and visitors, uh, I wanna mention, I did not put it on here, but just to give you a little bit of update, um, the annex was completed, they put, uh, the edge around that, the metal part around that, I wanna say Monday, or just very recently, um, it's rained quite a bit, and there's some standing water. And so we're in conversation with Trimco right now, they said, and he sent me, he sent me an article about how water can stand for up to forty-eight hours. I am not in that business, but that doesn't make any sense to me, because I think it should be rolling off all the time, but they said, if within forty-eight hours it's still there, there's a problem, if not, there isn't, they will be back here on Tuesday to look at that, and so, we have not paid them, we, we, we are monitoring the situation, but Carl and I were both pretty disappointed to see there was more to it than there. So, see how that goes, but just so you all are aware, um, parking lot, I don't know if you took a peek at that, but it's done down there except for the striping, that looked good.
Yeah, it's nice.
And, uh, you know, Mrs. Strain, she held the Thanksgiving meal last week, and we, we opened it up in our own parking there, cool, you had it right there by where they could be, they all got to go in, so they got to use it the day it was finished. Uh, now, I say finished loosely, there was, we, the middle fence, we adjusted where it was placed just a little bit, so we actually made it a little bit shorter, so that the gate could swing well on the, on the, um, uh, sidewalk. Where originally, I think, we had it placed somewhere else, we put it on the sidewalk, so that way, if you're rolling something through there, just makes sense to go through that way. But, for some reason, there was some miscommunication with Pierce, and they didn't put in enough black top to go all the way to the middle, um, fence, but they're gonna correct that, it's just that the weather is not cooperating right now, but they, he, he, they didn't mean to do that. So, he didn't get enough asphalt, he will get that, he will finish that project. So, we'll see what the weather looks like, it may have to be the spring, if it doesn't warm up.
We're changing that.
Yes, it's different, so there's about thirteen feet between where that black top ends and where the fence is, and he will come back in and fill it, so, just so you all kinda know what's going on there. Uh, and then, the metal roof is anticipated to be finished this weekend, and then Carl will do a walkthrough with Dylan, and see that everything is done well, we do have a couple of concerns up there right now, and so we're monitoring it pretty closely, and we'll just kinda see how that plays out, but, he will do that walkthrough before it's all said and done. I've got quite a few pictures of what's going on up there right now, so that if anybody wants to look at those with me, be happy to show those with you, and you can give me some feedback too, because that, yeah, that's not my area, but Carl's concerned, so we wanna just make sure it's done well, and we have shared that with Dylan, he knows, and so he says he's, everything will be great when it's done, so... The other thing I had, that I did have on there, was just a mention of the Senate Bill sixty-eight, and of course, that is where they've increased the safety requirements for, uh, Missouri public schools. Um, they're good requirements, they just take a lot of, there's just gonna be a lot of managing of that, and so part of that is a little bit of what Mr. Dunn was talking about, um, you know, he is, we designated him as our primary, and Mr. York as the secondary, he has already done his training, Mr. York will do this in February. Uh, we really didn't have to have that training done right this minute, it's supposed to be within a year, but, we know that safety is number one in the district, and so we know that there's areas that we want to see improved, and both of these gentlemen have a, a high interest in that, and so they, we got started, but I don't see any reason not to get started. And so, I think with Mr. Dunn's training in particular, he was able to make a, a, a contact with the fellow that came yesterday, and did our safety site assessment, I think that, and that was for free, he does two facilities for a district for free, and with us being all connected, we didn't have to pay for that, we just got the expertise of this gentleman, and the time that he spent, just to benefit us. And so he will get us that report, and we'll be able to start looking at, you know, what areas are priority for us to maybe invest in, or to look at, or to change our procedures, or whatever. Also wanted to mention that Glenn Shushank is joining our safety committee, um, and is gonna be a part of things quite a bit. He has a vested interest in the district, and when I reached out to Phillips County Sheriff's Department and said, do you have someone who could really become a part of this team, um, he, he suggested him, and Glenn said, yes, I'd absolutely love it. We're tickled to have him on board too, and I know Mr. Dunn has already met with him some, and we've just opened some new communication there. We're also opening more communication with Brandon Williams, who's gonna be down to meet with us, I think, the first week in December, if I'm remembering that being right, and just talk with him a little bit more, and see how much he can be a part of it. You know, if you have a vested interest to maybe be a part of things, or if any of you all do.
We'll be open anywhere, yeah.
We would welcome that, uh, we know we don't want the team to get huge, but we want it to also be filled with the right people to really make some good decisions for the district.
Yeah.
Have that expertise, so, um, is moving, is moving in a good direction.
I think a couple of things out of that, is just increasing the, uh, collaboration between the agencies, and then also looking at some, and trainings, we tend to do our own separate training, but maybe that's kinda the, part of the vision moving forward with some of these classes.
That's kinda what you and I attended last Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We went through a simulation, you know, of school incident, you know, and we're all, all, early, all the agencies within that community were involved in that simulation, including school administrators, and we got a lot out of that.
Yeah, I would gladly, whatever, whatever I can do.
Thank you. And then, of course, um, you'll see in your packet that I have K-12 safety, something Mr. Dunn and I sat in and had a conference with Mr. Branston over at MSBA, talking about this procedure, or this, this program and what it could do for us, you know, we have to have a pretty involved emergency operations plan, and if we sat down and tried to write that ourselves, we, we wouldn't be comprehensive.
Yeah.
We wouldn't even know what we missed.
Yeah, it's hard to, yes.
You just don't, no, and so, they've worked on putting this tool together for us to use, so, it's, to me, it's not a tremendous cost for what I think we're going to get for it, and the, the, the expertise I think we'll get from doing that, and so, um, to develop the emergency operations plan, to have the student safety planning, to have those resources to go with the behavioral threat assessments, starting to build teams to be able to do those behavioral threat assessments, instead of maybe one person kinda going through that, and I don't know how much you all know about that, but some of our school districts in the Frisco League are really, have dug in very deep to the behavioral threat assessments, because our students may not help with serious, and those threats that sometimes are made, we have to look at them from different angles, and so, anyway, there's a lot I think we can learn through using, utilizing this tool. And so, that's kind of come out of all of this training he's been going to as well. Uh, and then the last thing is cultivate healthy, safe, warm climate, you already mentioned, meet the wolves, so there's the dates and so forth, Dr. Murray's coordinate the, or the date, the times, I'm sorry, Dr. Murray, my glasses off, see, I can't see anymore, uh, Dr. Murray's coordinating the, um, dinner, um, that'll be four thirty to seven, gym events start at five thirty, and then, um, Mr. Simley's worked hard on this, to recognize our two former basketball teams who've recently signed up for our basketball, so, that's gonna be, I hope, just a nice celebration that evening. Well, in this quarter, I wanted to mention that Tabitha, um, has a gratitude challenge going on this month, and she just has a new challenge every month. Mentioned already the Thanksgiving meal that the, the FFA students held, and it, it was really amazing, it was, I just, they do such a phenomenal job, and all of our visitors that were here just could not speak enough about how kind the kids were. Kids were so great. They were so good, and they sat around... They were so good and they sat around and visited at tables after the meal was over for quite some time, visited with us, asked questions. They got out old FFA records and found their names in it. And I mean, it was just a very, it was just a very nice event. Mrs. Strain does an outstanding job, just an outstanding job. And then I want to mention the Veterans Day Assembly, you spoke to it a little bit more, but I also want to just say that we have several staff members that served our country and that's Dr. Murray and Joe Hurtade, Sarah Miller, who's one of our parents, Tom Campbell that you know, Lonnie Warford. I hope I didn't miss anybody, but I tried to rack my brain and pay attention there. But we do have several and it was nice that we could honor them during this process as well. Oh, and I do want to mention Emma Nelson. I don't know if you all saw the picture on Facebook, but to know that this young lady, the freshman, has sketched that picture of Mr. Hurtade from a photograph and then they presented that to him and surprised him, his wife was here, she exists. I'd never seen her, but she was here in person. I spoke to her and met his daughter and that picture, a freshman drew that. It was, it was dynamic and I think he was moved. And so I think it was pretty awesome for him to have received that picture. Anyway, sorry, I was long-winded after all.
Questions, Ms. Kingsley? No, thank you. We'll move on to our.
Could we scoot, for the sake of this question? Can we scoot that literacy one up a little higher?
We'll move it up next, not here going out.
That's what I was kind of thinking, yeah, some ceiling's going to take a little while. See, I get your pack.
We're going into our action discussion items. And just so you know, those that are here, I didn't do it or I really meant to. At 8 o'clock, we do have to go to a closed session to meet with our lawyer for just a little bit on an item. And that's when they can meet, so we'll have to stop, open session, take a recess at that point and come back in if we need to. We're hoping to get much of it done, if not all of it, before then. So you've got 25 minutes, Ms. Mercer. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But let's, if we can move the literacy part up, then we could, then she could stay if she wants to or not and then she can up to you, up there. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move that one up and you can go next.
Well, and I, let me speak for just a minute because I don't want to put you on the spot too much. They, we had, we've had a literacy plan in place, but because of CSEF, I noticed that was one of the things that I don't think we'd ever had a quarter proof. And so then we kind of reached out to Ms. Mercer, talking through that. And she said, and we have changed things quite a bit of what we've been doing. And so they got together on Monday, she and the rest of the team members, and they went through it to really update it according to what, where we are right now. So now I'll let you speak to anything that you wanted to, and I'm sorry, but I just put it in the packet. I'm talking while we're sitting here. So if you have not seen it, you can take a look at it now and see what that is, but it's just a reflection of what is going on in our district. And we're required by MSBA to have that in place, which we should.
So our literacy committee put this in place through the writing grant. We've been a part of it for the last two or three years. We really wanted to focus on three goals. The first was improving instruction through professional development in our teachers and also having the resources and curriculum to really make things great in classroom. Then we wanted to create an environment where students know that it's expected to read and write in every class all day long. And then the third goal we really wanted to develop in was finding resources within the community or those around us who also support literacy and were willing to invent in our students. And so the plan kind of has what, what we've put in place and then, and then what our goals are going forward.
Very much like a CSEF plan, just literacy, right? You look at that twice a year or?
Oh, we are, we meet three times a year. And so that's all the literacy teachers. It's great because it gives us time to collaborate and really talk about what's going well and what improvements we'd like to make in all areas of the building.
You have four members on the team, did you already say who they were?
We have Mr. Heldon Grant, who is the high school ELA. We have Mrs. Frankly, who is junior high, Ms. Ross, who is sixth grade, and then I represent the lower elementary.
We need to approve this.
Just need to approve it, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
Motion, Mr. Birdsong, second, Mr. Shear to approve our, improve our two literacy plan. When you put a discussion, then I'm going to proceed the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries 6-0.
I don't know if Mr. Moyers is planning to stay past the ACT, pre-ACT. So if maybe we do that one next, then maybe he can.
Okay. We can do it.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and speak to that, Mr. Dunn? I don't want to be.
So I feel like it's beneficial to offer both the pre-ACT and the ACT. Cost is different, pre-ACT is, is much cheaper. Couple of reasons why we want to offer the pre-ACT. One is practice kids we get, you know, for the ACT. You know, we're hearing good things out of our ACT prep class already that Mr. Perry's got. How the kids are feeling like they're becoming more prepared to take that. But offering pre-ACT increases us, we would like to offer that to sophors so they get that experience right off the bat. But another reason, what Mr. Moyers was alluding to with the A+ is if they don't get proficient on that Algebra I EOC, if they get a qualifying score on the math test, the math portion of either the pre-ACT or the ACT, then that'll replace it and they can get, they can receive their A+ scholarship. We've already had at least one student take the ACT and get that math score.
Right.
And, and earn that now. So part of that is, you know, educating the kids that you can still get it even if you don't get that score in the. But it's, it's given our kids another opportunity to get that math score.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
A couple of benefits from the pre-ACT. The ACT, we would like to offer to all of our juniors. This year being a transition year, be all of our juniors and then any senior who would like to take it. What we'd like to do is get on a cycle where sophors do pre-ACT, juniors do ACT. But since we haven't done that, we don't want to leave our seniors out. But you know, a couple of reasons, you know, to do that, just the ACT, you know, they need that to get into some four-year schools. One thing in talking to Mr. Moyers, he had an experience of, and this really opened my eye to another reason to offer the ACT, is he had a student in the past that surprised themselves by how well they did. And they thought that their life was going down a particular path because they didn't, they didn't have any confidence in themselves. And all of a sudden, they scored really, really well on this ACT like, oh, I can do some things. I've got some doors open, so now let me start looking at some of these schools and stuff because I can do, I can be something. And so I think the combination of all of that, it's a win-win for, you know, for our kids to be able to have those opportunities. If we had a kid that said, I don't want to take the ACT, I'm not going to fight them, but we want to offer it to all of our juniors and then any senior who would like to take that opportunity this year, the next year, the plan would be our 10 sophors do the pre-ACT. The juniors do the ACT, you know, at no cost to them. And we'd like to absorb that at least one time, but also we can offer that here during a school day.
Which is fantastic.
So they don't have to go somewhere else on the side, they don't have to drive somewhere.
And trying to put it into somebody's schedule. And just to follow up, and I'm just looking at some, some DESI figures here from, for us. Now, this was just 2024, but you know, the Missouri, the average percent of graduates taking the ACT is about 63% in the whole state. Our last, through, through DESI, was we were at 41%. So we, we need to get up, that should, taking test, there's nothing to it, we need, but we need to be able to get up to where the state averages, I would think, on, something like that on just test-taking. That's, that's not anything new, we don't have to create a class, we, you know.
Especially if it's here.
Yes.
And there's no cost to it.
Yes.
So that should, that will make some difference. It will make some difference, so.
My thought, the more opportunities the district can provide the kids, you know, the better off we are. A lot of these kids, I was talking to them, they were like asking me what the ACT was when I said it to them. There were several that, and you know, a lot of the junior colleges say, community colleges don't require it for entrance. However, if you don't have certain scores or don't have the ACT, you have to take a lot of the basic algebra classes and English classes before you can actually get into your regular curriculum and working on the hours towards your degree. Several of the different programs require them to have a certain score in math or English to get into specific programs and use it as a kind of a guideline on, on admittance into the programs and stuff.
Our school scholarships, a lot of them require a certain ACT score for a different level of scholarship as well. So it's, I think it's tremendous, I'm ready to go.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adapt, approve, whatever word we need to use to put this in place.
The plan and move forward with that, I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Shear, second, Mr. Birdsong to approve or give permission to spend some money for pre-ACT and pre-ACT.
How much money? This year, it'd be like $2,600, they're estimating 1,800 for the, for next year, once we get in a cycle.
Let's propose. I'm just saying, I probably ought to make a motion. Make a motion about unlimited funds.
It was, it was in. For the pre-ACT and because of the new bird stream reduced lunch rate, it's $56 for the regular ACT per test.
So about 2,600, correct?
I'll make a motion for $2,681.50 to proceed with the pre-ACT and ACT testing for our juniors and seniors this year.
Thank you, Mr. Birdsong.
Yeah, same.
You get the total in there?
Got it in there.
That is a best. Can you further?
You bet. It's going to depend on how many actually take it and all that.
If we have a discussion? It's a good investment. All those in favor? All those carries? 6-0.
Yeah, no, it's great. No one about it, so.
Yeah. All right, we're ready to move into.
No, this whole route, this whole route and everything.
Thank you, sir. Very nice to meet you. Mr. York, you're welcome. All I want to do, okay.
Please do that.
No, this is, this is tremendous, that's.
So now this is just as an approval of the safety plan, correct?
No, approving the purchase of a program. Does more than that. So Missouri School Board Association has a branch, they call the Center for Education Safety, called CES. So CES is one that does these trainings, they do a lot of stuff statewide constantly and they've got a group of people that are just phenomenal to work with. They are actually, they were ahead of the game with a lot of the safety stuff way before Senate Bill 68. They were, they were way ahead of the game. Now, this is kind of pushing things forward a little bit faster in some way. DESI is soon going to be pumping out some guidelines for schools to follow for side assessments, emergency operations plans, all of this stuff. But DESI, they don't have the expertise to put this together. It's actually CES who's working with DESI, you know, to do all of this. So our partnership with CES is pretty much going to ensure that what we do with them, we're going to be aligned to what DESI is going to be expecting of us. It's a good stuff because it's the safety stuff that's all important. One of the things is creating this emergency operations plan, which if done right, it's probably going to end up over 100 pages. It's a very thorough, very complex document. And they've got a list of a gazillion things that could happen to a school, but not everything applies to everything in school just based on location and geography and all that stuff. And so we would go through, we would check all the things that could happen here and we would develop a plan for. But thinking of all of this stuff and being thorough with, with how we would respond, who would do what, what incident command could look like, whatever the case may be, is, is a very daunting task. And so they have put together, they have created this program, it's actually tied to some Medicaid stuff, this, this program called Therapy Log that does a lot of Medicaid work. So they have helped CES build this program. And it's going to pretty much walk you through this, so they use, you know, they've got all this stuff included to really maybe cut the time of building this. They also use some artificial intelligence, but you can always edit things if it's not exactly suited for you and you can make those edits still. That's the big thing with this program, is building that emergency operations plan. And so.
Doug, let me stop for one second. And just for you guys' information, as I graduated from my school board training two weeks ago, this SB 68 and this, this was really talked about, probably probably spent an hour and a half on this, what's coming on this, that has to be in place and DESI is going to look at that and just one of, just knowing those things are adding to our plate, but there are, you know, there's a good thing to it. So it is something that's coming down the line, it seemed to be important from the people I was listening to.
Yeah, definitely. So whether it's our response, it's incident command for various things, who has what responsibility for what, for what events. So it's putting all that together, but it also, you can customize some things based on the individual needs of particular students, particular staff. There's an app that comes with it. And so once it's, and the program, the app, once it's created, it could, you could say, tailor a quick access, a quick reference guide for each staff member and they're maybe slightly different based on their different responsibilities, you know, within this or within the event. They also, to speed things up a little bit, the app can have pre-designated communication channels, roles and rules for emergencies, so if something were to happen, you know, they've got their specific roles and emergencies, you know, this app, you know, that would come with it. The behavioral threat assessment is going to be a very important piece, and Ms. Kingsley talked about that. We are looking at providing training at some point, you know, for that in the future, in the near future on that. But there's a behavioral threat assessment component to this program and to this app. And they're, they're going to be the ones doing the training anyway and it's their, you know, their forms. There's also, it's built in to generate the report necessary for the annual reporting to DESI. So annual reporting that DESI needs from our safety stuff, it's going to automatically generate that for us so we don't have to create it. It integrates with different campus. But it's, it's going to be a very, very thorough piece of technology that's going to be, I think, very, very beneficial for us. And the biggest thing is going to be that emergency operations plan, but there's, there's some other things with it that come and benefit us. And I'll tell you, if we try to build that plan on our own, we're going to forget stuff. We're not going to think of everybody. And this is going to be pretty.
Well, it's not really our line of work, you know, safeties and, you know. Need somebody that's in that line to help you get that program. I'm not pouring any concrete, I'm calling Mac because I'm not concrete yet. It's how it works.
And it might be a thing from getting established. And you just have what you need. We're getting it at the cheapest level right now.
It's about $760 a year to do the first.
$2,294 a year and we'd be tapping in for the three years.
Oh, for three years, excuse me.
Yep. So well, we.
Per year for three years.
And then my thought was, this is the cheapest we can get in. Yep, and then, and then we would maybe have those documents, have a lot more knowledge about what we're doing and be able to move forward, maybe without that. You can make that decision at that point, you know, but to help us get started.
That's a huge mountain by yourself.
It's a huge mountain either way, but this, this takes some of the stress off.
Little bit.
A little bit. I mean, it's still going to be a lot of time.
Still good, some damp mation.
Yes, we do. It's still going to be a mountain, the mountain's not as tall.
More comprehensive and probably cover things we wouldn't have thought.
Everybody understand what's been asked, spend about $3,000 per year for three years to help build our safety program so we don't have to go it all by ourselves, basically.
But we're going to have to build it.
Yes. You're going to get to build it. This will use some help if we can get it done.
No, it's not to us, it's not you there.
Yeah. Motion, Mr. Bookshire, second, Mr. Thompson to purchase the K-12 salary, safety program.
And that rate is a lot for those three years, correct? You don't want that thing rate.
Correct.
$22.94 per year for three years.
Now, I want to touch on something, just, I know you're in the middle of a motion, can I throw out something?
Sure.
One of the things we did was we met also with Mr. Branston and talked a little bit about how we could dig in a little bit more. One of the things we did was we met also with Mr. Branser and talked a little bit about how we could, um, dig in a little bit more on what we're getting back on our special education spending, and we can increase that just a little bit by tapping into another program that they have, and so we're going to do that. And so by doing that, we get the additional 20% off. That kind of helps to cover this cost of this too. We'll get a little bit more back in spend. And it seems by his numbers that he crunched there and what we're getting now, what we're spending now, we would anticipate that will cover this amount. So we feel like that's reasonable as well. And so that's all through MSBA, through the programs they offer, and so we didn't mention that, but that was something we were looking at, trying not to just spend, but.
So it's a possibility.
Look at a way to bring in the money to cover the spending that we're doing here.
Be great.
Yeah.
Motion and a second. On the floor, is there any further discussion? And then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the information.
Thank you. We're going to take recess, if that's okay to everybody. We're going to take a recess for just about two minutes, but before you go, Tony, we need to go into executive.
Sorry.
We can go, because we're going to recess open, go into executive, meet for a little bit with Grant, and then we're going to come back into open.
Yeah.
Need a, need a motion for a motion. Second motion, Mr. Thompson, second, Mr. Brookshire. We'll do a roll call. Lewis, Shear, Brookshire, myself, six zero. So we'll take a real quick recess in about two minutes, if we could, please.
Where else? We'll come back out of recess on the open session. We're back in our open session meeting. I think we're ready for MAP and EOC presentations. Information. He wants to go.
Screen cast. I know you guys have.
You have a screen cast up to here.
Yeah. You guys have a copy of it. But I have a screen cast. But you don't.
We're not seeing it.
Well, Josh, when I was going to go, Media Center was an option. Right now it's not showing as an option.
It didn't on mine either.
Right before the meeting.
For this sake, it's working good.
We need to go back to close and talk about our tech guy.
Do you have, is it a slideshow or what is it?
I thought he was gonna ask, do we have a tech guy? I'm like, I'm not sure we do. Uh, do you want me to share them with you real quick?
Yeah, if you just wanna share it to me, I can.
Your email address?
Yeah, just send it to.
Everything really well.
Yeah. We, we, we had it going before the meeting. Always.
But there's that.
I should have.
You opened it.
I can smell it. You opened it.
We were hot.
As soon as I smell.
Okay. I smell these folks. You got fire in here. He sniffed out. I can't tell you what they.
I can smell.
With the internal going up.
What's that brand? So I think what we'll notice on our side as we go.
We did not do well according to this. Here you guys will promote this and it does not look positive. Oh, we got the spinning wheel done. Like your brain right now.
Yeah. It works fine for me, that's all I'm gonna say.
Works fine for me.
During school day, it works fine for me. The network does seem to be lagging.
Seven of them wasn't allowed.
Let me use this.
Computer legs in my office.
So when you look through this, for the most part, our data, although the scores individually seem low, or most of it were in the top half of the conference. You know.
Yeah, I see that.
Last year's data. I think state average, obviously I'd like to be on the other side of the state average. Uh, most of our conferences below the state average in about everything. I'd like to be on the other side of that. This is somewhat of, when we get into all the details, somewhat of an arbitrary number. Uh, but we do wanna be on the other side of the state average for sure. So our junior high, uh, you'll see there on the seventh grade ELA, the ELA first, uh, you know, leading the conference there. You know, the seventh grade ELA and the eighth grade ELA, you know, right there at the top, you know, top three, uh, of the conference there. Still, again, I mean, people saying a bit, like being on the other side of the state average for sure. The math, you can see, top half, um, both of them. Obviously not where we wanna be right now, but that's, you know, where we are with the conference. We wanna keep climbing. I think we're doing some good things in our ELA. And I'll even say, uh, you know, Ms. Brinkley being first year has got some really good ideas. She's gonna be, she's gonna be good.
Yeah.
And then, uh, of course, Ms. Shuie's done a great job in our math. Getting those kids caught up, because we're still experiencing some of that COVID stuff too, you know, right now, which a lot of schools are. Uh, science, you can see there, um, really around that top half too. If there's any questions or comments on the junior high, we'll move forward to the high school side of things. We're going to the high school. Uh, it's our Algebra I. See what it is. It's not the lowest, eighteen percent. I, I will say, you know, talking to Ms. Shuie, I think she's more optimistic this year. Uh, with some of our scores there, so we're anxious to see how we turn out, you know, this year with those.
Next.
Yeah. English two. One of the things we're, we had that literacy assessment plan, but that's one of the things we, we've meant at the beginning of the year. Talk about increasing literacy across the content areas too. It's not just an ELA thing and we're gonna revisit that conversation on our next PD day in a couple of weeks too, the literacy side of things, because we're just gonna be reading and writing more in our classes, your content areas. And we'll continue that conversation. Biology one. You see, for the most part, our entire league right now is, is below the state average. But so. Government, I think the government test is, it's really tied to a lot of literacy stuff too. I think as we see our literacy improve, we're gonna see some of that government stuff improve too. I would test there. And when you go into Mr. Hurdings class, you see some really good things going on in there too. Really engaging classes and conversations. Last year, um, you know, there's a focus on our end, just on relationships and culture, learning our systems, what our strengths and weaknesses were, and, um, just kinda getting to feel for things. Establishing expectations for our students. We introduce some learning research, uh, planting a lot of seeds that we're starting to, you know, put into motion this year, incentivizing student growth. It's not just how you do a map test, but how you're growing throughout the year. And we do that with our evaluate stuff. And then the next one, the last one here, um, just kinda this year, we can go into the next one. This year beyond, um, just encouraging and increasing professional learning, some things we've done. We share resources weekly, uh, with the staff and in the newsletter that I send out. You know, book tasting, we did at the end of last year, where the teachers got to select a book, um, and read. And we came back, we talked about some of those things in August. Along those lines, it ties into the next one, increasing the writing expectations, with all the, uh, content area teachers got a book focus that had the literacy components, they all read their content area, came back. So it's, it's the learning, the professional learning, but also increasing writing expectations. Moving deeper in how we analyze and use data. And so some of this is what we're doing, but also, you know, looking forward, but just moving deeper in how we analyze and use data to improve instruction and learning. And we did something after the last PD day too, you know, digging in some of the technical data, uh, looking at. So continuing to evaluate our standards, our curriculum, our resources and our practices, and going deeper into, you know, research-based effective strategies in the classroom. I think when good things are happening in the classroom, test scores, good test scores would be a byproduct of that. I think sometimes we get, we were talking about this this morning. We get, we get caught up in just, well, we gotta raise our test scores, we gotta teach to the test, we gotta teach to the test. Well, if you're doing good things in the classroom, test, good test scores are gonna happen. And so just focusing on the kid and focusing on quality instruction and improving learning, um, and we'll see, we'll see the test scores come up. Yeah, that's it.
Got one that's very good. Okay. So on my end building, we can go ahead and go to the next slide there. I've got our last year's data at the bottom and this year's is at the top. The two big standouts are fourth and sixth grade ELA. If you look from, I'm giving you minutes to look, but also if you see, we're not quite at the state average there, but we did show some growth. If you look from, I like to compare, um, the year before's third grade, which is twenty-six point six. And then this year's, the next year's fourth grade, because it's the same group of kids, kinda track them that way. They did grow from twenty-six point six to thirty-four percent. But there was some growth there. More to do as well. You can see that fifth grade, um, definitely need some growth on there. You wanna flip to the next one's math? Are you on there? Yeah. Boy, you did that quick. We are again, fourth and sixth grade, they did great, fourth grade, we beat the state. Um, sixth grade, pretty dang close.
Keep coming back to this fifth grade though, it looks like, that's right, is my, that what I'm seeing?
Yeah.
And this is last year. Correct?
Correct.
And then.
Yeah.
So this year.
This current school year, yeah. Um, if you look at science, that's the next one, that's just fifth grade. Not great. Hoping that our Inspire signs that we have purchased.
What is.
Will help increase back.
What are your thoughts on that, that group? I mean, it seems like, you know, that, once we're in fifth grade last year, they're struggling, like they're struggling in most every thing as a whole.
If you flip back, well, let's look, let's look at the math. So, um, fifth grade would be fourth grade below, right? Fourth grade here, they, they scored twenty-five percent. So this past year.
They scored ten percent.
Yeah, fifteen percent is.
Did they drop? Um, ELA, if you wanna go back to ELA, we can kind of same thing.
Exactly same as them.
They were fourth grade here.
Were ten, ten.
So there's some things, definitely having their finger played.
Well, so I taught that for a lot of years. It is a difficult map test. It's not excused by any means. It is a very difficult one.
That's those things I don't know.
They expect the kids to really make a significant jump.
Excuse, it's just a big.
It's not.
There's things we can do to prepare, so.
Fifth grade is totally different.
And the other thing I wanna throw out is, and I was very focused on this grade level and the sixth grade and the seventh grade as a principal in my past role, as those three grade levels came up, because that group of kids was in kindergarten when COVID happened. And so you, your current right now, sixth, seventh and eighth grade are kindergarten one too. And that was all those foundational skills. So not only did they go home half, you know, in March, but the next couple of years were filled with lots of time at home, lots of time off learning. Parents who are worried about stuff, working from home. So those kids have had a disadvantage in my book, and there's other kids that have struggled, but those three grade levels, we saw a difference in them in my last school as well. And we had to really dig in to make sure those kids got caught. So I hate the data, to see it like that, but I also realize there's something there that's making it more difficult for those learners.
Go to the next one. I threw in, um, the surrounding, the personal league. Um, you can see, looking, is the only school they did not get their data in. It put us on the end of the date game, so. Is ELA, is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, ELA.
So if you kinda look across there, really, if you look at fourth grade, I mean, we're kinda riding, I mean, we're not fourth. In and out. Math. Down here. Fourth grade math. We are definitely in the top on there, all the way across. And again, that's where we be. And the same with sixth grade. But fourth and fifth grade math, I'm, I'm very, I'm very pleased with those. Yep. These are the things we're doing. Resources, adding those resources in that align with our standards. You know, giving the teachers those, those tools is, is huge. Um, adding the UFLI, huge. Giving the training to the wonders, just, just getting that, um, and we're gonna talk about here in a minute. I've got on our math curriculum, trying to get that in there, that's gonna be huge too. Getting those small groups, our SAT team, we've added a new program. Jill Brown brought a stat, that rewards program for the grade levels that Mrs. Kingsley's talking about, those fourth, fifth and sixth grade. Angela Mercer's been taking them and she has already seen big, big growth there with those fourth, fifth and sixth grade. Just analyzing that data the other day was huge too, the teachers seeing that, they're like, whoa. Yeah, any questions on that? We'll keep trudging ahead and. Get that, get that curriculum in there and training and exposing the kids and we're already seeing a big, big difference, I think. Especially if the low is all on the G one. Which will trickle up. It takes time.
Questions on MAP or EOC? Sometimes it looks discouraging, but it's discouraging for not just us.
Yeah.
Well, and then for us, as such a small school, our pool is real small. And when you're talking twenty kids taking the test, you weren't there that day.
What score makes you?
There's ten percent. Just doesn't take much. That's all. But not, again, no excuse.
Yeah, no, that was.
Just fact, because here you're looking at percentages.
Mm-hmm.
So you get, you get a percent.
Yeah.
Our number's small, so it doesn't take much to change a percent.
Even with that, there's still a lot of promises.
Yes, there's, there's lots of room, lots of room that we can, there's really lots of room where we can, you know, but that data, analyzing that data is big.
Yes.
Teachers, you know, I remember when, when this year's go and they'd go, uh, I know, teaching, I don't need the data. I don't need that stuff. But, but the more you get into that and the more you see what you taught and what was tested, didn't quite go together, you know, then they go, huh, we'll miss that one. But sometimes they have to see that, and that's the only way to do it is to.
You broke it down to how many questions there were.
Yeah.
What, how many points each question was worth.
Yeah, you have to do it.
And I mean, yeah, so with the. And, I mean, yeah, so for the teachers to see all that, yeah, it was powerful.
Yeah, that's, that's when you see it.
Yeah.
That's the only way you see it.
It looked like this year's eighth grade group, a group of fourteen kids, teaching at seven percent.
Yeah, that's, that's unbelievable, that's just, that's just a lot. Yeah, now, now with the math series.
See if we go, Nick.
In, or Mrs. Kingsley did, or one of us did, put it in the packet, I don't know if you guys, but. We used some PD time to go through this too, I had two different series that we looked at. I, staff, we talked about it, I even met with the entire panel at the Jersey State University, the whole, the entire math department down there. And they actually recommended Everyday Math. Yeah, I don't think, then they told you.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, so. I also included the crosswalk from, I don't know, I was having trouble pulling that up and I kind of talked with Josh, I don't know if you guys were able to look at that or not, but I included that. Where it actually shows you exactly where the Missouri standards are in, in the, in there, so it's awesome. Second, we're asking for second through sixth grade. So that way we can all have the same kind of academic language, build. On the, what we teach in second grade, then we kind of take it and run with it in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, kind of have some consistency, so that way we're not teaching it. We're speaking it one way in second grade, then somewhere different in third, then so if we keep that same academic language throughout. The grade levels, that helps kids learn as well. And we're kind of hodgepodge a little bit place right now with our math.
Yeah, we used the title one funds for that.
Yeah, we had.
When I left over.
Yeah, what happened was, we weren't sure if we were gonna get them, we didn't budget for them.
Understand.
And we received it.
Free money, huh?
The best use of that science.
And my teachers would like to start right after Christmas break.
And one of them is to purchase this, the other, we're gonna take a look and see how much we have left to see. If we could potentially do maybe a halftime or full time, depending on what, para. But I wanna really look at the numbers before we, before we go to that decision, but this was priority.
So what, what is the price for this?
Twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and seventy-eight cents.
And that's for three years. And also a training, yeah.
I mean, it's just coming out of those funds, so.
It's coming out of one fund, we hadn't.
Seems like it's been twenty grand, ten years for a new series. Seems like it's not.
Yeah, we, in the, you know, when we passed the budget, those title, the other title amounts were already in there, so that was part of that. This wasn't, so therefore we came to ask for that because it's not really much of it.
Yeah, and we did, like.
And your teachers are all good.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna say, we did, we, we talked about this, we researched it, I did a survey, every single teacher was ready.
Sixth grade math teacher was on board?
Yes, she was.
Always glad to get everybody on board.
Everybody two through six is on board.
They really, they really tried to dig into the last one that they purchased, it was really a homeschool program. And I think they saw there were some benefits at the first end, but then they realized there was a lot of shortcomings.
Yeah.
And so they were really ready to get an actual program that would have all those more comprehensive.
This is definitely much more comprehensive.
Yes, much more.
Motion to go with it.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Brookshire, second Mr. Birdsong to purchase. Math series.
Everyday Math.
Everyday Math, correct?
Yep.
For a total of point three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and seventy-eight cents, that's for three years with the PD included, right?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand, motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
And you say you're gonna start right after.
Yep.
She already has the requisition in, I told her I couldn't hit approve.
As soon as I can get it rolling, then I hope it gets here and they, they would really like to start.
Imagine it will be purchased tomorrow.
Moving on to letter F. Unused leave time. Brought to our attention that maybe when people left our district. Our, our time, how we pay them was, was lacking. It's probably something we haven't looked at for golly, a long, long time, I know, not since I've been on the board. And maybe before that, not quite sure, but maybe it's time to look at that. Because what you don't wanna happen, what, what you don't want happening is they see that number and say, I'll just take off. The last twenty days, because I got twenty days coming to me, so I'll just take twenty days off, and we're paying them, and we're paying ourselves. So you'd like to get that number to where that doesn't happen. And I, and we're not making the decision, this is discussion tonight, just, just to bring up some items for us to think about and talk about, give us a month or so to. To process and figure out what we wanna do, and then make a decision. So I'll let Mrs. Kingsley kind of talk a little bit to there, in your package, you see some other schools and what, and it's all over the place. It's not.
No consistency there.
There's zero, it's just zero consistency, so everybody can does their own thing and obviously they don't. They're not looking at what other schools may or may not do, which not important either, but.
Give them the gauge.
Just give us a place to start. Any, any thought on that? Do you have any thought on that?
No, I, I know Adam had mentioned, maybe they weren't all of them, they weren't all there, but.
I just didn't know if I was missing part of the school.
Yeah, you were, I, I keep asking them, but I think it's not maybe their highest priority, so these are the ones who responded to me and given me feedback from the Frisco League, I asked them again.
The lieutenant to know, the bookkeepers will have to answer the question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I would probably be only, the biggest, as I was kind of entering this and thinking about it, probably the biggest aha was that a lot of people, or, or so it seems, a few of them. Were including your bus drivers in your non-certified pay. And then the, the IBERA had it broken down based on how many hours per day they worked, just different ways that they looked at that. And then, of course. Something broken down a little bit further on how much time they'd spent in the district, so, or how much experience they had, less than five years, more than five years, less than twenty years, more than twenty years, so they were just really all over the place. Norris doesn't.
Breaking it down by the years they've been in the district.
Yeah, it's interesting though, I was really, I, it was an aha for me just to see how different people, they, how they looked at so differently, I was. Either one, twenty dollars, I, they're not gonna be able to keep that.
For less than five years.
My goodness, yeah, twenty dollars for a day, and that kind of surprised me a little bit, but anyway.
Except for years, always, tell you what it costs, paying them out, what it costs us to have somebody.
Yeah, so.
I agree with that a hundred percent. Because otherwise, otherwise they're gonna take their time off, we're gonna pay it.
You're gonna get to do it, you're not careful, anyway, you know.
Yeah, and we're one-twenty, we're one-thirty-five, over eleven days, so you probably go with the one-twenty if you did that, that's what, for certified staff member, we. We don't, we don't differentiate when it comes to subs, what position they're in, we pay them one-twenty, whatever position they're in in our district, so you'd have to kind of look at that.
Paying higher is to keep your certified employees, keep the teacher.
Keep them there, keep them in the class.
Yeah, they're not using their days because they're not getting any money.
Yeah, just to take off.
Yeah.
Would you wanna do that for all, or would you wanna have a years of service?
It's, it's a.
I'm just asking.
It's, I mean, it's, it costs the same for the district.
Think sometimes, I'm just gonna say, your people who've been here longer tend to be here, and the newer ones trying to get them, I don't know, that, that could weigh into it.
May actually affect them more.
It might, it might.
If it costs a hundred and twenty bucks per sub.
Yeah.
They should get a hundred and twenty bucks.
So we would, could we just list that as we would pay them full subpay? And then if we were ever change that, then it changes with that?
Be the easiest way, can't we, even on track?
Yeah, because then we won't have to update it really unless we make it different.
That's good.
Right.
It's just keeping up with what days.
Am I missing anything? I mean, that's, kind of cost of that.
It will cost you that, yes, no matter what, if they take off those all the days.
It costs you.
It would cost that, so whether they would or not, that's a debate.
Now, it has a chance to cost us that plus. The other subpay, it might, it might not.
If they decide to take it anyway.
Yes.
Yes.
So, I mean, it has potential to cost us.
No, I mean, no, because they would lose their day.
A loser.
So we're not paying them for the.
We're not paying them twice.
That's why I was making sure I was.
You're either gonna pay the sub or you're gonna pay the teacher.
Gotcha.
One of them.
No, that's why I'm asking.
No, I was thinking about it.
So let's put together an idea of what that might look at, look like, send that out in the next, not, not this week, after Christmas, after Thanksgiving maybe.
Yeah.
Then we can look at it December.
Let me ask you, how do you see a difference between non-certified and certified? What are your thoughts on, on that? Because as it's.
Do we pay, we, we pay one-twenty for even, for everybody?
Doesn't matter what they're subbing.
Will we pay fifteen dollars an hour? For non-cert?
That's where they start, yeah, somewhere in there, I have to look, maybe fifteen, twenty-five.
Fifteen and a quarter, maybe.
Fifteen and a quarter, yeah.
I, I saw his face, he said that.
Fifteen, twenty-five.
I'm on.
No, you're not, duh.
No, I'm not. Not a, no.
Not even for fifty-five hours an hour, you ain't coming out.
No, you're right. But. So it'd be, let's take a look at that, because. What they're paid would be.
So it's what we're doing anyway.
What they're concerned about is they, well, is he pay? So whatever their pay would be, that would keep.
If it's fifteen, twenty-five, it's a hundred and twenty-two bucks.
Is that what it is?
How many hours?
Yes, it's the same thing.
Same thing.
It'd just be subpay.
So we just make it all subpay?
It's what, what's looking. Figuring, so.
That's what they call, I'm just saying that's what the cost is.
Fifteen, twenty-five is, eight, eight hours is.
We don't do anything with the bus driver?
That was gonna be my next question, so do we need to do anything there?
We do.
So I know we got two that are retiring and.
We need them to drive all year long.
Long as we possibly.
I don't want to drive and can't anyway, but.
Sure you can.
Can, but. You might get in trouble if I did.
So what, explain to me what.
What do we do for a bus driver, what do we pay, what do we get a sub for them?
Basically, they have, they have two trips a day, so twelve fifty a trip is what.
So twenty-five bucks a day.
Twenty-five dollars for the day, so.
And that's what we pay a sub.
We pay them whatever the trip pay was. Isn't that how you typically pay it?
It's usually Lonnie. Trip pay, twenty-one dollars.
Routes, so if they, if say, one of the runners route, it's, that's what it is, it's usually Lonnie that runs it, so. We don't lose as much, because he's usually on, he's already here in the morning, and then sometimes he does other time.
So he has his time, you know.
A little different with.
But if we had to pay a sub, we would pay him twenty dollars an hour?
That's what I was gonna be projecting.
Okay, our normal route is about an hour and a half. Three hours a day.
Sounds like it, if that's correct, I don't have a number in front of me, but I'd say that's probably a good answer.
So you're pretty close.
We just talked about since this pays, not that long. But anyway, yeah, so sixty bucks a day.
Most of the routes are, most of the routes are under that.
No, no.
Yeah, the time you're pretty sure.
They have to get the bus, they're a lot more involved than just the job. And it depends on where to go, one goes down near the springs, you know.
Well, you have a full list.
So just put in there twenty dollars an hour for a route, I mean, whatever their route is, twenty dollars an hour is to be their payout. That would be fair.
That's better than what we're paying them now, so.
Just, just talking.
No, no, I, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, but I'm just.
That's, that's better than what we're paying them.
Don't take it for.
No.
Challenge it, please, if you need, if you want to.
I'm agreeing with you.
I, I know, I'm just saying if it needs to. Hope I'm making sense of what I'm saying. And I pay with that all the time.
Yeah.
Okay, so that kind of makes some sense, let's draw that up and see what, what that looks like.
We'll look at it next minute.
Okay, okay.
Got the ball, ball rolling on it, what's, what we need to do.
What is it, anything out there?
Yeah.
We'll move on to letter G. I think we have a policy to approve. Zero, three, four, two.
So. Amy was in Friday, and she said, hey, have you approved this policy lately? You need to appro, approve it every other year, and so we looked around and, but no, we haven't, we've got it, so we need to start getting that on the, the. On the yearly routine of every other year approving this policy, and what it does is it, it means that the candidates that are, that are. Going to file for school board would not be required to file that personal financial disclosure. Statement, and so really it just keeps them from having to do that. That it's just routine to do that, it's already, we've already approved it in the past, is gonna reapprove it every two years.
Make a motion to approve it. Motion, Mr. Shear, second, Mr. Brookshire, if you approve. Policy is zero, three, four, two, which is the conflict of interest and financial disclosure, nepotism, that sort of thing. Any further discussion? Then, now, all those in favor, please raise your hand, motion carries six, zero. It's time to. Open up our dates for election sign up. This year we have three seats that are available for a three-year term. It'd be Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Wells, and myself, all three will be up, those seats will be available to file. And plus, when Mr. Shear resigned, we appointed James to fill out the rest of this year. So this seat will be available for a two-year. Term. So everybody has to, has to go through election. Everybody has to, has to sign for that election, they can, they can file for any term, any seat that they want to. So, you know, James, if you're gonna, if you're gonna file, you don't have to file for that seat, you can file for a different seat, but you have to file for one or the other, you have to, you have to tell which one you're gonna file for, you can't just say.
I'll take whichever one.
I'll take what, it's, you're filing for one or the other. So they're both open, one is a two-year seat for one person. Three, or a three-year seat, three different people. Well, there's four folks that will. Up for election.
Well, if anybody signs up for the two-year.
Then you would, after the election's over and you, and you reconvene and you, you run through your. Notes in your office, then you would go through the process of appointing someone for the next year. You would run through that course, and then it'd just be a year, and then you do it again. All right, so as I see, as I see this, because I.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I've never, I always thought it was when the seat came up. For election, that still, is that not how, this is just different than I've ever.
No, that's a, they hold it to the next election time, and then that seat comes open.
But not for that particular seat.
Of that seat.
Gotcha.
So that's, that's a two, it would be a two-year left for that seat.
It's a first, I've never had it like that, I guess it's been. When that seat was up.
It was the end of any of them, it was on the last one we did, when we appointed Tony, that seat came open the next, the next election.
Yeah.
It was unique, if you'd just gotten on and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you got your?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, because I think dates might be wrong. Or maybe update, not need that big.
Might need that, Daniel.
Let's look, maybe I did it wrong.
I'm hoping that our offices aren't closed December twenty-third through the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Uh-oh, that's one, that.
Twenty-four?
Yeah.
Okay, then I think.
Sorry, it's usually about May before I actually start writing the right year, when I write check out something.
But I think we would be open, only it would be closed. December twenty-second, which is the Monday, I know, but no one would be here.
No.
So we would be closed twenty-second through the twenty-ninth. And then the thirtieth, you're only open from three to five. That correct? So if you change it to. So if you change it to say, final will also another curl upon holidays and breaks when the school district's central offices are closed, which is December 22nd through December 29th, filing will end on December 30th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And maybe you should work, work it just a little different, filing will end on December 30th, offices open from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Okay.
Or filing available 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. I don't know, maybe just leave it alone.
No, that's fine.
And, yes, there are three positions, and you have, you'll have to, when they file, we'll have to have them tell you which one they're filing. Have to indicate this, that should come from the county clerk.
The only thing else that came up yesterday when we were talking in our superintendent group, is most of the schools are just taking up, staying open from 4:00 to 5:00. They just have one last day, and do you want to make it 4:00 to 5:00, or do you prefer it to be 3:00 to 5:00? Just me and April coming in hanging out.
I don't know that it makes a difference to me, there's a lot of places that only do the 4:00 to 5:00.
Right.
You know, like fire districts and whatnot, there's a bunch of them that do that same thing.
Yeah, I, we didn't, I didn't really realize that, and then they were talking about, and they're all just coming in for one hour, and I thought, why did we do 3:00 to 5:00? If you all were okay with that, I'd like to change it 4:00 to 5:00.
That, that doesn't make a difference.
4:05 is finally.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, so we're going to change it from 4:00 to 5:00.
Okay.
Okay. So you've got time to begin on, on the, start December 9th, this is a Tuesday, correct? And then run us through to Christmas break.
Yep.
Christmas break, we're closed till the last day, on the 30th of December, and then we'll be open for that one hour, 4:00 to 5:00.
Hmm.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, clear as that.
Motion to accept.
You have, you have to.
You have to be holding for five.
I have to.
You have to be able to.
Will you double check? I feel like it was New Year's Eve last year.
Pretty sure it's.
Are we sure it's December 30th and not 31st?
I don't, I don't, I don't know what the last day is.
Last day's the 31st.
And that would be.
So we'd have to change that to the 31st.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure the MSBA is the 30th.
Okay, I just want to check on that before we, before we vote on that, because.
I didn't, I didn't.
I'm almost certain that the last two years we came in on New Year's Eve.
Let's make sure we're right.
Yeah.
I didn't look it up.
You think it's 31st?
I, I don't know what the last.